So, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. This is our annual budget meeting. We will be hopefully approving for several segments the fiscal year 23 budget. That fiscal year does in fact begin in October and runs through the end of September. And so I'm officially calling the meeting to order. It is 6:01 PM. And attending our commissioners Duncan, Brooks, and Philios. Do we have any changes to the agenda? I don't hear of any, so we're going to be moving on. And what I would like to point out is that we're going to open up for public testimony right after the first several items under the fiscal 23 budget hearing pursuant to the Idaho Code. At that point, we'll break for about 10 minutes. Now, when I open up for public comment, we're going to keep it strictly to three minutes. You go beyond three minutes, we're cutting the mic. We have to if we're going to accommodate everyone. That's the first point. The second point is please confine your comments to the budget. We're not here to, you know, handle climate change or things of that nature, much as I'm probably sympathetic to it, but that's beside the point. But the fact is, we need to stay on track, and this topic tonight is the budget. And we do have several budgets. We have Aquifer Protection District, EMS, the Cootney County budget as well. And so without any further delay, we're going to open up. And the first item, it's item D, D1, on your agenda, fiscal year 23 hearing pursuant to Idaho Code 31-1605. It's a discussion, and I'm going to turn it over to the Aquifer Protec-
Well, why don't we let Jim open?
Forgive me, Jim. Open. Do you have any comments?
Well, I will wait till it's put. Thank you, Kirk.
Oh, okay. Jennifer?
Just opening the budget.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Brandy?
I'll wait until my turn?
You're going to wait until your turn. Okay. So Nisha, you get to go first. Nisha is the director or the chairman of the Aquifer Protection District, commonly referred to as APD. Go right ahead.
All right, thank you. And so just to start out, we recognize we're a very small piece of the county's budget.
You do need to turn your microphone on. Just push the button. Perfect.
Okay. Doesn't sound right. So, we recognize that we're a small piece of the county's budget, so we do very much appreciate that the commissioners give us a few minutes to talk about who we are and what we do. I will keep it as short as I can, but do want to, you know, spread the word about what we do. So, to start out with, the Aquifer Protection District was approved by the Cootney County voters and established by the Board of Commissioners in 2007 for the protection of groundwater quality in the Rathrum Prairie Aquifer. So, as the advisory committee for which I am chair, what we are responsible for is developing work program elements, proposing methods of cooperation among agencies, and developing a budget recommendation to the commissioners for consideration with this annual budget. So, why is this important and why do we care? The largest reason is because the Rathrum Prairie Aquifer is the primary source of water supply for Cootney County. It supplies water to more than 500,000 people. That's across Idaho and Washington. There's over 2,200 wells in Cootney County. This aquifer, which the outline is there on the map, it's an enormous resource, and it has been recognized federally by the state and locally through Panhandle Health District and Cootney County as a vulnerable and irreplaceable water source. So, what that means is there is no alternative source equivalent to the Rathrum Prairie Aquifer that can supply physically, legally, or economically what this does. So it's important that we protect it. So how does the Aquifer Protection District work? We, the county, receives revenue, $5.74 per year, per parcel, within the highlighted area on the map in Cootney County. We collect those funds along with $100,000 per year from Burlington Northern. And then what the Aquifer Protection District, what the policy and advisory committee does is accept funding requests January through March of every year. And then we consider these requests and how they may assist regulatory bodies implement education programs or coordinate work of public agencies related to aquifer protection. So there's a number of program elements. I'll go through first. Every year, we get funding requests from DEQ and Panhandle Health Districts. So DEQ, a portion of DEQ and Panhandle Health District are funded through that parcel fee revenue, and those funds are used for BNSF's refueling depot. There's DEQ stations, someone there who monitors that site full-time. In addition to that, DEQ provides education and outreach and technical assistance, so relative to aquifer questions that come up. And they also assist Panhandle Health District. On Panhandle Health District's side, they have a critical materials program, so they go out for entities that are storing hazardous materials over the aquifer. They log those and they investigate those, inspect those every year. So that's the primary thing. They have also historically managed the five-acre rule and some sewer management agreements. And then they do water quality sampling, too. I think it's important to note that the county has adopted a five-acre rule this year in conjunction with what Panhandle Health District had done as an additional cover. So that was a great thing that the commissioners took on this year. The requests that we received this year and our funding, the Confluence Project, that's an educational program for 10th through 12th grade students, Spokane River Forum, they do an annual conference that improves awareness of the aquifer, which crosses over the Idaho-Washington boundary. Agromet Stations, Waste and Recycle Directory, so there's a website that you can go to, and hopefully people in this room have found it and made use of it, but it just tells you for what type of waste where you should take it to dispose of. We are funding some signage at City of Rathrum, Rathrum Park, and then there's some equipment that is being funded this year, the Hauser Creek Stream Gauge and the Twin Lakes Flood Control Unit. And then there's a couple of carryover projects. Cootney County Fairgrounds well, they're going to use that well for monitoring, and it will be a good well to use for education for 4H students, and since it's right next to Cortland High School, those students will be able to go there and see what a well is and how it operates. And then every few years, there's an update done to the Spokane Valley Rathrum Prairie Aquifer Atlas, and so that is in the works as well. Internally, the Aquifer Protection District Policy and Advisory Committee are working on some projects. One of them that's not noted there, in this next year, we will be putting together a master plan to prioritize projects that relate to the aquifer. And then in addition to that, a couple of projects that we've been working on is establishing protections of the natural surface water discharge. We've been calling them critical area, or critical aquifer recharge areas. There's one at Rathrum where Rathrum Creek just basically dissipates into the aquifer, and same at Hauser, Hauser Creek does the same thing. So those are projects we're working on internally. This year, we received 10 external requests that totaled just under 700,000. We recommended funding nine of those, and then one was withdrawn. So the total new projects this year is $551,826. Our internal projects between the master plan and the critical aquifer recharge areas is just over 57,000, and then the carry-forward projects are 59,000. So total budgeted expenditures for this year is $668,551. That's up 27% from last year. Part of that is the carry-forward projects that we weren't able to accomplish last year. This will require, because right now, we're not, we don't have, the parcel fee revenue won't cover that, we will be utilizing about 169,000 of the fund balance that the Aquifer Protection District has. And this is just kind of a more detailed summary of where all those funds are going to go. And that's all I have.
Questions for Nisha? Nisha, just for the benefit of everyone in the room, the Aquifer Protection District exists by statute. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So that is state law that established it?
Yes, through Idaho Code. I think it's 305 or actually it's 39507.
So it's not just the county's doing, it's the state's doing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Leslie, any questions?
No.
Bill? Thank you, Nisha. Appreciate it. Okay, second item, Cootney County Emergency Medical Services Chief Bill Keely. Welcome, chief.
Thank you, commissioners. Thank you for having the opportunity to present my budget. We've taken a little different approach to budgeting this year to try to clarify the future of EMS in Cootney County and plan for the future of EMS in Cootney County, as well as to clarify some of the things of how KCMSS works. So to start with, right now, along with our fire department partners, we currently operate six paramedic-level ambulances, three advanced EMT-level ambulances, and three fire quick-response units that cover most of Cootney County. We also cover a portion under contract of Bonner County, of the southern part of Bonner County. Harrison Ambulance, which is a partner agency to us, and we do provide them with some money, covers the southeastern portion of Cootney County on the other side of the lake. And we also give $10,000 to Shoshone County District 2 to cover the east side of the pass that is in Cootney County, since we do not have any units in that area. We do also provide paramedic support to the Shoshone County units covering Cootney County, as well as the very northern part of Benowa County. As those ambulances enter Cootney County on the way to hospital, if they're in need of a paramedic, we will rendezvous with them and provide that service to them on a contract basis. One other thing I think that's really important when I talk about my budget is one-third of my budget, or about $3.5 million of it, is tax dollars and various other, there's a 25-cent charge on your tags that comes to EMS from the state. We get some sales tax money that the state legislature set aside, a very small amount for EMS. The rest of my budget is all user fees. So as I talk about my budget, it's not, some of it's not going to make sense, because there's a whole lot more money I'm spending than you actually see in my presentation, because you're really just seeing the tax side of it, not the user fee side of my budget. So I think it's important to understand that that one-third of that tax money, people get confused that what does that pay for? Why do I pay taxes and then why do I get a bill if I use the service and get transported? And I think this explains it. This is our yearly call volume for the last four years, and you'll notice in 2021, we had a significant spike known as COVID, and we had a 13% increase in our call volume. We are on track to do at least a 10% increase this year. So COVID and the influx of people into Cootney County is significantly increasing our call volume and putting significant stress on the system. The other piece of this pie that's very important is transports. You will see there's a difference. There's a 9.7% increase in transports from 2020 to 2021. So when you look at my budget, that difference between the calls we have to respond to and the number of people we transport is where tax dollars are spent. When we transport someone, they receive a bill that is paid by a variety of sources that I won't bore you with, because it's extremely complicated and confusing, but they receive a bill, and their insurance company, the individual, a variety of programs pay that bill. I still have to respond to almost 35% more calls than we transport, and that's where the tax dollars are spent, because we still use equipment, we still use fuel, we still have to staff for that call volume level, even though there's no recoup of anything from that. And that's really where my tax dollars go. They go to purchase ambulances so that there are ambulances in the system and available to respond, and then those responses that really do not produce any user fees out of them. And they are jumping hugely. As we sat down and looked at the budgets, this is what we focused on. KCMSS incorporated a 10-year capital plan this year. It's the first time we've had a capital plan. It's the first time we've looked at how we're going to replace the fleet without taking out a loan and replace it purely on the money that we receive and to make that happen. And it's a rolling capital plan. We'll replace everything in eight years. We'll have two years to save money, and then we will begin the process all over again in 10 years. All of our heavy equipment is a 10-year lifespan on it, and that plan is in place so that we know where we're going budget-wise out forever. Another important thing to us was provide some increases to our partner agencies. We have limited them significantly over the last couple of years, just due to the lack of ability to give them increases. So we tried to make up for it this year, because you saw the huge transport increase last year. Probably the most important thing to anyone who lives in Cootney County, we have reached the point where we need to put on another transport unit. So this year, we will put on an ambulance that Cootney County EMS is paying 40-hour staffing for, and Cortland Fire is paying 18 hours, four days a week, for. So that ambulance will function four days a week, 24 hours those four days. Probably within three years, we will upgrade that to a 24/7 vehicle, as call volume increases. I need to provide retention of my staff, and unfortunately, because I know what my tax dollars are going to look like, I do not know what my user fees are going to look like, and I do not know what inflation's going to continue to do, having some contingencies to continue to operate as prices continue to increase dramatically for us. To give you some insight at where we're going, we are requesting the 3% levy rate that is allowed by Idaho law. This translates into $93,000 for us, because only 3.5%, 3.5 million of our budget is taxes. Our new construction number, the $57,000, sales tax and DMV fees, we'll get about $19,000 from, and we have two URD closures for $34,000. This translates into a gross, and I want to underline that word, of 802,187. We actually lose money in this whole process as we go through billing and we go through contractual adjustments and all that. We actually lose some of our money compared to what we show on paper. So that is a gross figure. The net comes out to be about $212,000. We're giving a 4% increase to our transport agencies based on a formula that has been in place since 2015. You see the cost for the new 40-hour ambulance in there. We're increasing our subsidies to our non-transport agencies, those three fire QRUs, as well as Harrison Ambulance, at 4%. This piece of my budget is about 59% of my budget, is purely in having people and ambulances and ambulances on the road. They haven't done anything yet, just getting to that point. As we go through the billing side, we write off in bad debt about $62,000 a year. We pay $36,000 in billing and collection contracts. Almost 85% of that is billing contracts, so we pay approximately $31,000 to bring in 6.3 million. So it's a good deal. People ask all the time about that. It's a really good deal. We have had to increase our medical supplies over this year's budget by $117,000 due to cost increases. All these expenses make up 30% of my budget. So to get ambulances on the road, people in them ready to respond is about 90% of my budget. I am proposing a 5% increase for my personnel, where there's only five of us. In addition to that, we have a pay matrix that two people will reach step increases. I've also restructured a position and added a whole lot more responsibility to it with a 2% pay increase. And then what everyone in this room is used to dealing with, health insurance increases, vision, dental increases, have no control over. So to pay KCMSS and make us function is about 8% of the budget, total budget. I won't bore you with all of these. We all know fuel's going up. We all know vehicle repair costs are going up. Both of these numbers are 137% over what my current budget is. We're going to go way over these line items this year, just because of the price of diesel fuel and the price of buying repair parts. So we have tried to take into account what the next year is going to look like and try to get ahead of the curve. To give you some idea, our current levy rate is 11.4% per thousand assessed. On a $500,000 home, this year, someone paid $57.81 in EMS taxes. With the changes in assessments and with our current budget including the 3%, our levy rate goes down to 6.9% per thousand, so someone in a $500,000 house this year will pay $34.95 a year in EMS taxes. This will make us the second lowest levy rate in the state for paramedic-level EMS agencies. We have multitude of unknowns. This budget, the way it's structured, allows KCMSS and our partner agencies to be in a good position to maintain the current level of services we're providing to everyone in Cootney County and to be able to add the service that we know needs to be in place without putting us in a position where I need to come back and say, "We're in real trouble and need help." This whole budget is revolved around what is the most we can do for the people we serve without putting ourselves in a position of, "It's this time of the year, and I'm out of money, and I don't know what I'm going to do." I will be happy to answer any questions.
Leslie, Bill?
I just have one. Harrison, is that a private company?
Harrison is a private nonprofit, all volunteer.
Okay.
So they do their own billing, but they only run about eight calls a month. So in order to maintain their equipment and all, we have to assist them. So we provide them with some monetary assistance to keep them functioning.
Bill, questions?
No questions.
Chief, can you just briefly describe the joint powers agreement for the residents?
Certainly. My agency, my bosses, I function under a joint powers agreement between the fire departments in the county. I have five representatives on my board that are in charge of basically what the county commissioners do, the day-to-day financial functioning of the system. They meet on a monthly basis. They have spent the last three months going through this with me and preparing this budget for presentation to the county commission. They have approved this budget, and it's their job to make sure that I don't do stupid things and we are in a position to function appropriately.
Fair enough.
And Commissioner Philios represents the county, and then I have four commissioners that represent the various fire districts.
Thank you, chief. No other questions? Okay. Thank you so much. So that's Cootney County EMS. And now we move to the county itself, and none other than Clerk Jim Brandon. Take it away, Jim.
Thank you, Chairman Philios. For the eighth time, I'm presenting a balanced budget to the Board of County Commissioners. But before we start the budget, I have to send a shout-out to the two people sitting at this table right here. Keith Taylor, who has been serving as our interim finance director, and he has always put his team before himself. I have known Keith. It's been my honor to work with this fine man for more than eight years, and he has done just amazing things. When I first became clerk, he was the guy that showed me how to operate the accounting system that we have. I've depended on Keith for years, and the county is blessed to have that man. Sitting to his right is Brandy Falcon. Brandy Falcon has our, is our budget accountant, and in the eight years, I have never seen a more accurate, efficient presentation for the board to make the decisions without her weighing in on what she thinks you should do. It's your decision, and it always has been. So with that, I'm proud to announce that effective September 12th, Brandy Falcon will be taking on the role of Finance Director for Cootney County. And with that, I will turn it over to Brandy.
Go right ahead, Brandy. The floor is yours.
Wow, well, thank you, everybody. And thank you, Jim. I'm excited for the opportunity. It's been great thus far. And thank you to Keith. Jim was correct in everything he said. All right, Brandy Falcon for the record.
You might want to bring it in closer, briefly.
Closer? Okay. Is that good?
A little better.
Speak up.
Okay. Is that good? Okay. All righty. We're going to do just a brief overview of the fiscal year 23 budget. All right, so obviously, our budget is compiled of requests from our nine elected officials. The budget is prepared under the supervision of the clerk at the direction of the Board of Commissioners. These are the county's departments that report to all of our elected officials. Our budget is compiled of each of these departments' individual budgets, managed by the electives that they report to. To start off, as required by Idaho state law, we have arrived at a balanced budget this year of 120 million. On the right, you can see that our personnel costs come in at the largest, 69% of our budget, 83.1 million. Next is going to be our operating costs, 26%, 31.8 million. Lastly, our capital purchases at 5% of our budget. This is a breakdown of our budget per elected official. You can see that the largest at the top is the sheriff, smallest at the bottom is the coroner's budget. The Board of Commissioners is in here twice, because our enterprise fund technically is under the BOCC. They are our business-type fund. They're self-supported, so we break them out separately.
And for everyone's benefit, that's solid waste.
Yes, thank you. All righties. These are some of the more significant challenges that we had to deal with this year in arriving at a balanced budget. First of all, the county is experiencing a record number of open positions. Last I checked, it was 127. To try and combat this, we are budgeting to implement the wage study, as well as cost of living adjustments county-wide. Next, House Bill 389. This was an issue last year as well as this year. It established the preliminary levy rate, meaning we have to use the current fiscal year's value to calculate our rate. This causes severe delays in our budgeting process, not just for us, but also for all the districts. And it also reduced the amount of new growth and URD value that we can take. So between FY '22 and '23, Cootney County is losing 1.8 million in revenue as a result of this House bill. Next, House Bill 735. This changes the way our public defense is funded. We are no longer able to levy for public defense costs. Rather, we have to rely on a fixed sales tax distribution from the state, as well as grant revenues. Next, House Bill 316 changed the way Panhandle Health District is funded. Prior to this, the county had to fund 50%, and the state had to fund 50%. Now the state has said they're no longer doing that, and we are required to fund the full amount. So the county's funding burden has doubled from 800,000 to 1.6 million. Lastly, the Idaho Transportation Department is undergoing some centralization processes as a result. Revenues in our DMV are projected to go down over the next two years pretty severely. We took a look county-wide to see what other DMVs were doing in other counties. We took a look statewide to see what other counties were doing. It seemed everybody is raising other fees in the DMV to combat this, so we did the same thing to help reduce the burden of the DMV on property tax. So our budget is made up of different types of funds. Obviously, first, we have funds that are supported by property tax. First, we have our general fund, has its own levy rate. That's 22% of our budget, at 26 million. See over here. Next, we have our special levy funds. These funds have their own levy limits and rates, set by statute. The largest special levy fund is the Justice Fund, which is 43% of our budget. That's why we break it out on its own, because it's so large, 51 million. And then next, we have the rest of our special levy funds, which in total are 15% of the budget. That would be the county fair, the historic society, district court, just to name a few. Then we have a couple self-supported special revenue funds. They make up 3% of our budget. That would be funds such as snowmobile and aquifer protection. That would be funds such as snowmobile and aquifer protection. And then, as mentioned earlier, our enterprise fund is our solid waste department. It's supported by its own business activities. That is 15% of our budget. Lastly, we have a small number of grant-funded personnel. Largest expense for us is personnel. As I mentioned, we're implementing the wage study, meaning we are bringing our pay matrix up to market wages. In addition, everybody is getting a 6% cost-of-living adjustment county-wide. With the exception of our elected officials, they are slated to receive only the 6% COLA. In order to try to achieve some budget savings, we took a look at all of our open positions. Those that have been open over 100 days, we are only funding at 50%. This does give us about $2 million in budget savings, but that's also a liability that we have to be aware of. Once we start to fill those positions, we obviously have to fund them. There were two county departments that got wage increases above and beyond the wage study. That was our detention and dispatch. We raised them to be either equal with or very close to equal with Spokane County. In addition to the wage study, we also had a number of personnel requests from departments county-wide. The board ended up approving 11 new full-time employee positions for a total loaded cost of $700,000 and 56 position changes for a total cost of $430,000. Overall, personnel is increasing by 12%. You can see on the right, the wage study increases per elected. And then on the far right, the savings incurred from cutting open positions. Our operating budget and capital purchases, operating is increasing $2.1 million. This is mostly primarily due just to the rising cost of goods such as paper, our janitorial contracts, drug testing, et cetera. We're also adding a couple new programs that the board approved for a total of $343,000. $190,000 is being paid for by restricted revaluation funds. The rest is property tax-funded and that it mainly consists of the new janitorial and HVAC contracts for the sheriff's campus as well as the onboarding costs for the new Hayden deputy positions. And then our capital purchases increased about $300,000 over last year. The majority of it is being paid with restricted fund balances at $4 million. $1.5 billion is being levied in property tax.
Brandy, would you just describe what a restricted fund balance is?
Yes, so restricted fund balance, an example would be of a fund that has its own, like the assessor, their revaluation fund. They have their own levy rate, so any fund balance that they build can only be spent on assessor items. Or like our vessel fund, any fund balance they build can only be spent on vessel purchases.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Yes. This is our property tax. Off to the left, this is the calculation we do. This is set by statute. First, we start with our base, which this year is $53 million. The base is the highest of the prior three years levy amounts. Then we add the percentage increase the board approves. We add on our new growth and we add on a URD return if there happens to be one. There is not always URD money every year, but this year we have two districts closing. And then at the end, we take out replacement dollars the state pays us and we arrive at our levy amount, $56 million. On the right, you can see how property tax is distributed through our funds. By far, our Justice Fund gets the most of our property tax dollars at 59%, which is $32 million. Next-largest would be the general fund at 17%. Next-largest is the district court at 13% of the budget or of property tax. As you know, Idaho uses a levy-based tax system. This means that a tax bill is determined by multiplying the levy rate times the value of the property. The levy rate is calculated by taking the taxing district's budget and dividing it by the total property values in that district. It is worth mentioning that Cootney County is only one of many districts in our area that collect property tax. We are one of just the school districts, the cities, highway districts. A lot of districts collect property tax from residents. On the right, you can see our change in market value county-wide and then our levy rate and levy amount change year-over-year. As I mentioned, we have an enterprise fund, our solid waste department. They are self-funded. On the right, you can see year-over-year contrasts of this year and next year's budget. I just want to point out at the bottom, this large negative number, the internal payments, that is money that they pay to other county departments internally for services that we provide them, such as payroll and billing, et cetera. These are the types of revenues that we have in the county budget. Obviously, there's property tax at $56 million, also referred to as the levy amount. Then we have state funds and other fees at $56.5 million, fund balance use at $5.3 million, and then grant-funded personnel at $2.3 million. This is a year-over-year comparison of property tax versus non-property tax revenues. Starting over here on the left in FY '21, you can see property tax in the dark blue and then going up each year, it does increase slightly. Non-property tax in gray increases as well, but at a much quicker pace. This reflects the ongoing effort to switch the burden from property tax to non-property tax revenues. FY '22 and '23, you can see non-property tax revenues are higher than property tax. This is just another way of looking at our year-over-year changes in our A, B, and C budgets. We've already covered each of these increases individually. And then, looking forward to next year, these are just several issues that we've identified that are good to be aware of as we go into our next fiscal year and looking forward to the next budget cycle. Obviously, the most important is just the significant amount of ongoing personnel costs we're adding. Our new salary load is gonna be $80.5 million. And then always to keep in mind the liability of the open positions that we have cut funding on. In conclusion, total property tax that we are budgeting to levy is $56 million. This is 47% of our anticipated revenues. We're going to continue experiencing the labor shortage. We are hoping implementing this wage study will help with that. And as always, legislation continues to impact our funding streams and our operations. It's completely out of our control and we just have to roll with punches. On the plus side, we continue to have healthy fund balance reserves. We are actually able to increase our general reserves from two to two-and-a-half months and we continue to have amounts set aside for capital projects. We are still a debt-free county. And then, since 2012, our budget has been awarded for outstanding financial reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association. And then Cootney County is also one of seven pilot counties for the State of Idaho Comptroller's Office Transparent Idaho Project. And we've received a lot of great feedback from their office on the county's finances and how we have things set up. And as always, all of our budget reports and information is available on our website, kscub.us. And with that, I will be pleased to present a balanced budget to the board for deliberation.
Thank you, Brandy.
Notice the last slide, please. Her title has been changed from the last slide.
Congratulations again, okay. Leslie, Bill, any questions?
No, I don't.
Brandy did mention that basically, in the state of Idaho, we're on a levy-based system. And this year, many of you probably saw your assessments rise dramatically, but you might also have noticed that some of your property taxes decreased. And the reason for that is the total property valuation, all the property in Cootney County from 2020 to 2021 went from $28 to $44 billion. So the load is actually being spread across a far wider base and that's what's helped keep the actual property taxes down for some folks. But despite the fact that some of the increases in the assessments have been very dramatic, we've heard of some at 70 and 80%, but again, that's because we're on a market-value-based system and that's what we need to go by. Okay. Any other questions for Brandy? Thank you, Brandy. Very well done. Okay, so I'm gonna move on to item four before we open up for public testimony. Public, yeah. And so I'll take care of item four and I'll read this very briefly. It's probably the, something I regret to have to do, but unfortunately, there are aspects to our positions that's not always very pleasing. So, "The BOCC has been approached with grave concerns from assessor employees, other county employees, and elected officials regarding the performance of the assessor, Bela Kovacs. Bela has demonstrated an inability to adequately fulfill the role of assessor. The BOCC has evaluated his skillset, experience, and talents. Members of the BOCC have discussed with Bela his failure to perform statutory duties. Bela has demonstrated with his actions that he lacks insight to evaluate his own performance. Therefore, the BOCC has concluded the failure of Bela to meet his statutory duties, including deadlines, and his refusal to take any responsibility for the performance of himself and his staff. And so, we find it necessary, and we'll take this up later, potentially in a motion, to reduce his salary approximately in half to about $45,000 per year." And I'm not gonna take any comment on this at this time, but we will open up for public comment. And that is the next item on our agenda. At the conclusion of the public comment, we'll take a brief 10-minute break. Once again, we're gonna, excuse me, we're gonna limit to three minutes and we need to do that if we're gonna be able to accommodate everyone because it's not just everyone in the room. How many folks? 67 people online? None here, okay. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna call you out and I'll call the names and if you decide you wanna offer any testimony, you're welcome to do so. If not, you can pass. So this is not indicating who wishes or doesn't wish to speak, but maybe you all do. Okay, Sherri Rancier?
I'll pass.
You'll pass. Is your mic on?
Well, that's what I'm trying to find out.
Now it is. You're on. Okay, three minutes.
Good evening. Good programs help to grow the economy and they can keep our community safe. Heritage Health is one of those programs. They support the comprehensive health of their clients, which helps to keep our community healthier. In so doing, these clients are better able to be productive, properly functioning members of our society. Leslie, when you were running the second time for county commissioner, you told me you are not responsible for, quote, "other people's children." Frankly, every resident of Cootney County is someone's child. The fact is, all three of you are being paid to protect the health, the safety, and the general welfare of other people's children. Our community benefits greatly through the activities of Heritage Health as this health agency seeks to accomplish its mission statement, which is to deliver a healthcare experience that provides hope, inspires change, and extends life for our patients and our community. Leslie, during a budget meeting, you adamantly sought to deny Heritage Health the $50,000 allocated in the proposed $120 million budget. When we consider at least 30% of our jail population alone are struggling with uncontrolled mental health issues, the work Heritage Health does in the mental health field alone can have a positive impact on this population, keeping them out of jail and saving taxpayers' money. Any resistance to providing such a small amount of funding to Heritage Health is likely a dangerous and harmful one for all the individuals whose lives your decisions impact. People who attended the event you labeled polarizing as justification to reject the proposed funding for the nonprofit health clinic are Cootney County residents and taxpayers too. They are folks who also happen to have healthcare needs equal to our own. These folks, no matter your disapproval of their lifestyle, deserve nothing less than equal respect and representation from all their elected officials, all of them. They help to pay your salaries too. I am asking you to rethink what I consider is a narrow-minded point of view, so to step up and support the good work done at Heritage Health. Please approve this funding. Thank you.
Folks, keep it down. Questions for Deborah Rose? Okay. Laura Tennyson?
My name is Laura Tennyson and I'm a Coeur d'Alene resident. Thank you for allowing us this opportunity to provide public comment at your meeting tonight. I'm also here to talk about Commissioner Duncan's proposal that funding is cut to Heritage Health. And I believe that what Deborah Rose said is true, but what I'm gonna talk about is on a slightly different topic. Whether or not Heritage Health deserves the funding, needs the funding, is not the point, in my opinion. The point is that we have an elected official who has spoken out against and is attempting to discriminate against a very important public entity because they serve a marginalized group that Ms. Duncan doesn't apparently agree with. Heritage Health appeared at Pride in the Park because that is a direct portion of the public that they serve and they are responsible for serving anybody who comes through their doors, whether they're gay, straight, black, white, et cetera. To have an elected official speak out against a marginalized group and a group that has received already many attacks in this community is absolutely unprofessional and is uncalled for. And so I would encourage you, Ms. Duncan, to take a different stance and not consider discrimination when you decide whether or not to vote to fund Heritage Health. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Keep it down, folks. Keep it down, please. Alicia Abbott?
My name is Alicia Abbott and I work for a statewide organization called the Idaho 97. This month of August, I have been monitoring Cootney County public meetings for supremacist rhetoric. And I'm here tonight to speak with Deborah Rose and Laura Tennyson about recent comments from Commissioner Duncan regarding Heritage Health's participation at Pride in the Park. I would just like to be up here to say, please disregard those comments. Please fund Heritage Health fully, as you normally would in your capacity, and please consider rejecting these outward homophobic displays. They are very harmful to our community and it really, it gives people comfort when they know their elected officials stand behind them in the face of these supremacist comments. So I really appreciate your time. This has been a really enlightening public meeting. Good job on a balanced budget and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. It's Megan Dartis-Curts. Did I get that right?
Coons.
Coons, sorry about that. Welcome.
All right, so I'm gonna talk on the same topic. Greetings, Cootney County Board of Commissioners. My name is Megan Dartis-Coons and I am a Coeur d'Alene resident, social worker, and professor of social work for Boise State University here in Coeur d'Alene. During the June 27 budget meeting, Commissioner Duncan suggested defunding Heritage Health in the amount of $25,000. Adding insult to injury, she stated she would prefer to defund them completely but would allow them another year or two, in quote, "figured out." Heritage Health has provided healthcare services in North Idaho for 36 years. Their mission is to deliver a healthcare experience that provides hope, inspires change, and extends life for our patients and our community. They provide medical, dental, and behavioral health services to our most vulnerable community members, which includes Medicaid and Medicare patients, which we know many places don't take Medicaid patients anymore. Heritage Health was a sponsor of Pride in the Park this year. Commissioner Duncan stated that the event was controversial and Heritage Health attending the event was in poor judgment. She believes that our LGBTQIA friends and neighbors existing louder is controversial. She also believes in retaliation towards organizations that support the LGBTQIA+ community.
I just wanted to slow you down.
Yeah.
Please try not to make it personal as much as possible. Go ahead.
You're assuming, you're assuming my thoughts and you're, yeah. So just keep it to the facts, please.
Well, I'm quoting what you said at the meeting, so that's facts. Anyway, Commissioner Duncan, words matter. The harm to our queer friends and neighbors is great when you make statements such as Pride in the Park being controversial. With regards to Heritage Health, I believe they will be okay without the county funding, but it's shameful to know you don't support them because they support people different than you. In closing, I request that this board does not use homophobic, transphobic, and supremacist language in the future. This will help our community stay safe for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa Bormpole?
Commissioners, my name is Dr. Teresa Bormpole. I am a resident of Post Falls and I'm here today to talk about the county budget item of Heritage Health. First of all, I have no affiliation with Heritage Health, just an affinity for the incredible work that they do in our community. As we discuss the impact of our tax dollars and how it impacts our community, it's crucial to ensure that the board and the public knows about the incredible work that Heritage Health does. The mission of Heritage Health... The mission of Heritage Health is to deliver a healthcare experience that provides hope, inspires change, and extends the life of patients in our community. Heritage Health's vision is to live in a community where people thrive because they are free from the devastating impacts of chronic disease, poor mental health, or harmful substance abuse, excuse me. I think we can all recognize the importance of early interventions in our community for early chronic mental and substance abuse. As a community health clinic, Heritage provides services on a sliding scale. The funds that are provided by the county actually provide scholarships, so people that can't afford to pay their sliding scale fees can still afford healthcare. That's really important to me. As a primary healthcare provider in Cootney County, Heritage engages enthusiastically in community events as they want to speak with all folks in our community who are deserving of healthcare. And that, of course, in case anyone's wondering, is everyone. Again, I have no affiliation with the organization, but when the community knows about subsidized dental care and access to mental healthcare, the mobile care by way of the Mobile Medical Unit, our community wins. If community members know of the services, they will use the services, and our community will be healthier. This makes for good stewards of our tax dollars. Community outreach is likely why I saw Heritage earlier this year at the Post Falls Festival. They were at the Fourth of July Parade. They had an event at Silverwood. They participated in a health expo at the fairgrounds. One only has to look at their online and social media accounts to know how earnestly they engage with our community. Heritage hosts and attends these events to ensure that all members of our community have the knowledge of and access to the services that are supported by the many funding mechanisms, including the county. As a resident of this county, I see their extensive outreach as an unmatched asset to our community, making them incredible stewards. I, for one, support the community health clinic and support county funding that promotes quality health outcomes in all corners of our community. I ask that you please maintain the funding for Heritage Health and truly enhance the resources, if possible. All of my neighbors are deserving of healthcare, and they make it happen. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Alan White?
Yes, Alan White of Rathdrom, Idaho. I wish to change subjects and discuss the Bela Kovacs salary cut. I've talked to a number of employees here in the county, as well as a number of others, trying to get my head around, you know, what he's done wrong. Several months ago, I went to a political rally for Bob Scott, his appointment at the time, and the room was filled with a number of employees, including Bob Scott, who said, you know, if I can get rid of him, if we can get rid of him tomorrow, oh, the world would be a better place. And I said, what, you know, you're ready to write him out on a rail? What's he done? Well, we don't like him, and we don't, he's not, he wasn't the person we wanted, you know? Well, he was appointed by you. He's won the election. He doesn't have anybody running against him. So I guess that would be one of my questions, is specifically, what items has he done to deserve getting his salary cut in half? In other words, being unable to support his family? He must have done something tremendously, right? Did he shoot somebody? I mean, I don't know. I'd like to know what items he has done to, you know, enable you to cut his salary in half. But more than that, this sense of dangerous precedent, I mean, I, you know, if I was Jim here or Sheriff Norris, I'd be, I'd be a little worried. They're going to cut his salary today. What if they don't like the way you buy that second cup of coffee, and a handful of deputies get together and say, we don't, we got to get rid of this man? Well, the only way to get rid of this man, because he was elected, is we'll cut his salary in half. So, like I said, this is a dangerous precedent if there was a chain of items that he has done. And I've heard some things that are done, but when you have a department that undercuts him quits, and then you have, I don't know how many more, hundreds of people who protested, obviously, the assessment of their property, I can see a backlog. I can see where, you know, things get backed up and reports aren't on time, and you're, how many more, how much more time do I have, Chris?
Thirty-eight seconds.
Thirty-eight seconds. Okay. I won't use it all, I promise, Chris. I'm going to let it go at there. But, yeah, if you can discuss it and just, you know, he is so bad, and we're going to cut his salary in half for these reasons. But, you know, like I said, if I was an elected official, I'd be worried about that, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Peterson?
All right.
Are you going to pass? Okay. Shelley Underwood?
I'm Shelley Underwood. I'm the city administrator for the city of Post Falls. Tonight, I'm here to endorse the letter that you received from the city of Coeur d'Alene, asking you not to include the penalty and interest on property, delinquent property taxes, that is, in the past, has gone to the other taxing districts. I do have a copy of the letter, if you would like. I also have a copy of the list of contacts of the 27 taxing districts supporting this request, and I can provide those to you. That's my simple request. Also, I'd like to congratulate your staff that has received the GFOA award since 2012, because that is a significant accomplishment. Should I give you the letter?
We have them.
You have the letter?
We do.
Perfect, that's all I have.
City Attorney.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley.
Okay. Let's hold the applause, please. Leon Deuce?
Probably be the same.
Commissioners, my name is Leon Deuce. I'm the city administrator for the city of Rathdrom. With me today is also Mayor Vic Holmes and our council president, Mike Hill. Want to just keep it brief and short. Thank you for your service, but we had also respectfully asked that the penalties and interests be removed from the county's treasury budget. These funds are due to the cities and other taxing districts because people are delinquent in paying their taxes, and it's the penalties and interests that come from those delinquencies that then come into the city's budgets and other taxing districts. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is it Jim G. or is it Jane G.? Help me out here.
James Green, potentially?
It only has your last initial. Go right ahead.
I should be the last one on the list on the bottom of that.
Well, you're the first, you're the first one on the second page. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Commissioners. I wrote it down because I tend to talk, as my wife reminds me a lot. Usually, I like to see, you know, look people in the eye, but I will go ahead and read off this. Considering, this is also changing the subject to the assessor's salary. Considering the fact that costs are rising, as we saw in the budget, elected officials are receiving a coal raise, as we also saw in the budget, we're faced with considerably more people moving into our area, all while the county is down considerably employees, 127, I believe is what I saw. And the assessor's office is battling record number of petitions to the tax increases. I think I saw 700 or so, which seems a lot more than previously, which also seems to may have impacted deadlines you mentioned, assessors, or Commissioners, and the fact that we, that the taxpayers have voted for Bela in the primary. It is odd that it's even being considered to decrease the assessor's pay. I'd like to ask if anyone can describe one, as Mr. White, I believe his name was, Mr. White asked. I'd like to ask if anyone can describe one, subjectively verifiable action that Bela Kovacs has taken that indicates he is unable to do his job. So with that in mind, I ask that you reject the reduction in the Cootney County assessor's salary, as there is no clear cause for doing so. Please, you know, present this information, as Mr. White mentioned, his person that was going against him never had anything really concrete for doing so, nor is there an advantage for the taxpayers that we can see. Of course, you know, there is a small decrease in amount, but with the $90 million or whatever, it just seems like a disservice to the taxpayers. So, thank you.
Thank you. Linda Bushling? Linda?
I backed Bela Kovacs's campaign this last primary, and I did so not because he's a friend of mine, because he wasn't. He was an acquaintance. I was interested in why he was running, because I knew him, I knew his wife a little bit. So I did some homework, like a lawyer does, because I am a lawyer and trained, I'm a trained lawyer. And facts matter to me, and I listened to his opponent, and I was astounded, astounded to learn the difference in the capabilities of both candidates. I went back and listened to, why did the BOC decide to unanimously appoint him as assessor when they did almost two years ago? And you did so because you had three great people to choose from, but he clearly had the qualifications. Now, there's been allegations that he's had problems with personnel. Perhaps he isn't a people's person. But can he get the work done? He was laid on the rolls. There are many reasons, valid reasons, why he was laid on those rolls. He was not late because he didn't do his work. He was not late because he didn't know what he was doing. He was not late because he didn't want to do the job. He had everything going against him. But he got those roles out in two days instead of two weeks that he's usually normally given. There are, we saw the assessments, the value of those assessments go up in a year that nobody's ever seen anything like this before. And he's supposed to do the same kind of work in a few, the same amount of period of time. One of the clerks in the paper mentioned, I don't know whose fault this could be, be laid on, because what can you do? There's all these property assessments. Bela ran on the platform of assessing every property because that was the fair thing to do, instead of leaving it to other people to pick up the pieces by just taking an assessment here and an assessment there. He promised to do it for everybody so that everybody was fairly and clearly and adequately assessed. That happened, for the first time. The poor employees at the assessor's office have been working under an antiquated system brought in by a prior assessor who never vetted that session, our system. Since January, Bela has worked to bring it up to speed. I encouraged the assessors, I mean, the BOC to talk to the assessors. This week even has been a tremendous change in their attitude of what's going on. I think, this is a disenfranchisement of the voters of this county, to take him out at this close to the time of the election. There's two months before the election. Who are you going to put in his place at this time and get the taxes out?
Mrs. Bushling, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jonathan, anybody wish to speak?
There's just a bunch of comments that are not having to be.
Okay. Okay, so Bela, you asked to go last.
Is there anybody on the phone line?
Do I have my spot back?
Excuse me?
Do I have my spot back? Did I say I didn't want to talk?
Come right forward.
Chris, there's a member who might like to speak as well.
That's perfectly fine.
There might be some latecomers that didn't sign up.
Does anybody else wish to speak? Okay, ma'am. Your name, sir?
Brian Peterson.
Oh, go right ahead, sir.
First off, I work for Spokane County, so I kind of have a feeling of how the whole government stuff goes. I've also worked for Post Falls. Not a fan of Post Falls, but anyways. The 6% increase for employees is, seems like a really bad time, considering normal folks that aren't in a government position are actually taking pay cuts because most of them aren't getting raises at this time. I would love to get a 6% increase. I've never heard of that before, even in Spokane County. More like one and a half, two, six seems a little extreme. As far as this Kovacs guy goes, again, I work in government. Sometimes when you get a new boss, you're so comfortable with the guy before, and changes happen. Some people adapt, some people don't. I can't speak for these people, but from experience, that's happened. Thirty-four people seems like a lot. But anyways, cutting somebody's pay like that, are you going to cut somebody's pay for a normal position? Or are you going to fire him? Because I know, again, having experience working in government, once you get past your probation period, you pretty much have to take somebody out to get fired. Other thing I haven't heard, and I don't know why it's not on there, but as far as the impact fees, I had a question on those. What is it that it took you guys so long to decide to impose those? I feel like at this point in time, growth is probably going to slow down. Building is going to slow down. You could have taken advantage of it 10 years ago and not probably had to raise the taxes for the community the way you're doing this year. My parents are now paying $200 more a month on taxes. They can't afford that on retirement. As far as the assessments go, I mean, it's probably a bigger deal than I know. I haven't looked into it, but for you guys to assess a house that I paid $370 for, and it goes up to $700, it's fake money. It's not my money unless I sell the house. How do you tax somebody on money that's not in their pocket? I don't know how that works. Again, I'm not, you know, educated on that, but it just seems crazy to me that you can tax a house on base taxes on a house that that money is really not even there, unless I sell it. Now, if I sell it, okay, yeah, I'm sure you're going to, I'll take it in the shorts, but just some things to think about. Again, like the 6% increase, that seems like, that seems, that's big. And I know that you guys are having trouble. I'm in the wastewater division. We can't find quality people. They show up and they leave. You think they're great in the interview, they're gone. Pay is always a problem. I mean, when McDonald's is paying you 18 bucks a frickin' hour to flip a burger or microwave a burger compared to a wastewater.
Okay, we need to stop, sir. Thank you. Do you want to speak?
Thank you, Commissioners Duncan, Philios, and Brooks. I am a former-
I'm sorry, I didn't get your name.
Your name?
Jeanette Bradley.
Okay.
I am a former Cootney County employee. I worked in the auditor's office specifically as the tax auditing specialist. My personal occurrence and working relationship with Bela, I found to be less than amicable. He was quite abusive in several emails that I finally had to have Jim Brannan step up for me and tell him to stop. The hardships that the auditor's office fall under, we are supposed to have amount of time to review all of the assessed property rolls in order to send that information down to Boise, where they in turn send that back to us saying, we agree. We give that to, at that time, 67 taxing entities. These are all individuals that go out for levy. They have to post their budgets prior to posting their budgets in the paper 10 days, twice before their hearing. They must have these figures. By Bela not having that information timely to the auditor's office, it hurts. It puts the county in a position to be sued. Taxpayers would then again lose. Bela did that to me when House Bill 389 came around. There were all sorts of reasons why he could not meet those deadlines. He was aware of it then, a year ago. Yes, the legislature will come out with new House bills each year, but to keep putting those limitations on the auditor's office and putting the county in a position to be sued, that is just one part of it. For those that are here saying, we don't understand why he's under this scrutiny, anywhere else out there in Cootney County, if you did not perform your essential duties of the job, you would be terminated, period. This is a county position, Bela. You were put in the position, yes. You've had hardships, but none of these have been unseen. And I, as a taxpayer, am furious to see that these things continue to happen to the people that work for not only Cootney County, but the rest of the levying districts within Cootney County, and all the employees that work within the auditor's office, the treasurer's office, and the assessor's office. More than 34 people have decided to leave under your leadership. Many of those people, I needed to perform my job. Many of those people, I had to rely upon their information each time they said it was a hostile work environment, that you were less than approachable, that you would belittle them in emails in front of other employees, admit it's just a terrible place to work. These people did not resign because of COVID. They took retirement options so they could still pay their mortgage, eat, and live within the county that they live and love. I think there needs to be additional looking into this matter, and that's about all I can say.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Once again, Jonathan? Once again, Jonathan.
They're just chatting to each other.
Anyone else present wish to speak?
Thanks, Commissioners, for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm addressing you on the, uh, the fees, the damages and late charges on the taxes.
Name, please.
Mayor Vic Holmes, City of Oathrum. I would suggest to you that you've been given a very, I think, descriptive letter about the legal problems with this. I would go to the political end because that's really my job and role, is why would you do this? You take money from the other taxing agencies, they're going to have to raise their taxes. We all share the same taxpayers. So it's just take it out of left pocket or the right pocket. If it comes to a legal argument, taxpayers all lose because one side will take the other side to court, and once again, the taxpayers lose. So I would ask you, why take this step for the first time? Why put taxpayers in this position that either you're raising your taxes or all the other taxing entities raising their taxes? And why put jeopardy, the county in jeopardy and maybe a possible lawsuit and the expenses to all the taxpayers? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone, hold it. Anyone else, please? Yes, ma'am. Name, please.
Georgina. Do you want my last name too?
Yes, please.
Roger, R-O-D-G-E-R hyphen Wilson, W-I-L-S-O-N.
Got it.
So I just want to basically talk about the fact that I am a patient at Heritage Health. I have Dr. Hen Best, he's amazing. And he helped me through some really tough times with menopause. I'm not, I'm a nurse, but I'm not a nurse there, nor am I a nurse at Cootney Health. And at one point in my life, I was a single mom. My kids now are 33 and 30, and I relied on help to get myself through college and to get myself through school, going back now for intelligence and security through Bellevue State. And I think that it's important that right now, there are a lot of single moms with children that are in this community that do need that extra help with co-pays and things like that to get healthcare, um, you know, help from Heritage. So I, I think in, in the long run, when you look at somebody who is 54 years old now and when I was in my 30s, I did need that help. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wish to speak? Hearing, yeah, go right ahead.
My name's Kristy Reed Johnson. I want to thank you and all the prior boards for allowing me to sit on the Aquafor Protection District Board since it's, since it was born in 2007. I'd like to thank all of our county commissioners for being the considerate people that you are and have been, for listening to all of us, and for taking all of these things into consideration with the best interest of Cootney County's citizens. I wasn't planning to speak tonight, but a couple of things bothered me. The fact that Heritage Health would lose their funding is heartbreaking to me. I'm a patient at Heritage Health. I was there at the beginning of Heritage Health when it was the dirty clinic. So this is something that's critical to our community for a multitude of reasons. I mean, when you have to go to the extent of having things on the ballot so that you can actually expand Medicare so that these people can get some additional healthcare, please reconsider full funding for Heritage Health. I, that's the biggest thing on my list tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there somebody on the telephone who would like to give public comment? Someone on the telephone has their mute button off. If you are not going to speak, can you put your mute button on, please?
Okay, last call, anyone else? Okay, Bela, the floor is yours, but I have to tell you, it's three minutes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Bela Kovacs for the record. Thank you. It's a privilege to serve in public service, Cootney County. I'm, I'm honored and humbled by being allowed to do that. There's a variety of reasons why I'm here. I'm not going to go into those, but I'll tell you what, one of the reasons that I, that is, what, there is a reason that I'm not here, or not a reason that I'm here, is due to the fact that the criticism that I've received, I don't think anybody would ever want to subject themselves to that. And, and it's, it's just, it's just, it's, it's a sad, sad situation that people have to go through that. Let's talk about responsibility. I have never denied responsibility, not once. You can't deny it. It's in state law. You don't need me to reaffirm what is already written in law, okay? But let's talk about law. Let's find out what the law says. I have before me Idaho Code 63-509. This is what it says about the delivery of the rolls. On or before the second Monday of July, the Board of Equalization, which is the Board of County Commissioners, must deliver the property rolls with all changes, corrections, additions, and exemptions from taxation entered therein to the county auditor, period. And, end of the statement. Nowhere in this state law does it even say the word assessor, okay? So I, I submit that to you for your consideration. I have met with counsel many times, and they have said to me repeatedly that, that where there's conflicts, state law governs. Somebody, please remind me of the quote and who said it, either, I think it was Ben Franklin, either we hang separately or we hang together. Let's talk about issues. I have been asked to fix a system in two years that took many, many years to build. I have staff that have been there for 40 years and 30 years, that when I've asked them questions, they say, I don't know. I can't find the written process. Recently, we had a progress report that was due to the state of Idaho that is something that has occurred every year since long before I came there, and nobody knew how to fix the problem with the report. It took various weeks, several weeks to, to resolve. You cannot discover these processes overnight. It takes time. You work on solutions to resolve the problem. It takes time to work out contracts and work out solutions. You have to wait for expert consultants to get back to you because they have prior commitments to everybody. I can't solve in, in the course of one or two years what took years to create. There are many assessor challenges, and I would like to add the fact that in one of the issues that I tried to address was to find out, I learned that the processes are not, are not even within my control. We have to respond, we have to deal with IT, we have to deal with the Board of County Commissioners, which sits as the Board of Equalization. This year, the delay occurred for three reasons. The first delay was caused by the board when they decided to delay-
It's three minutes.
The second cause-
I'm, I'm going to let you finish this thought, go ahead.
The, the second cause was the second delay due to an irregularity that occurred in my office, and, and it was by no surprise to me due to a handling error that, that was not someone that was typically on my side. And then also, another reason for the delay was due to a computer problem, which we had discovered and realized on the 30th of June, that we didn't have the, the capabilities or the wherewithal on how to create it. I had to mobilize to get a contract put in place. That was a total delay of about three weeks. The rolls were delivered to me a week late, or nearly a week late, about, I, I, I'm going off my memory. There are six rolls that were due this year. Three of them were delivered to me after August 1st, okay? I processed them as quickly as I could. I took some care and dedication to ensure that they were correct and accurate, and, and I delivered them as quickly as I could.
Okay, so we're going to stop right here, okay?
I'd just like to add one closing thought and one last thing. I received from, today we heard during the appointment of the prosecuting attorney that there are conflicts, that conflicts do occur. I have been seeking counsel from legal counsel for them, from this county for this issue. I have been told that there is a conflict. I am hereby asking the board to authorize legal services, contracting for outside legal services to, to look into and address this issue that we're facing.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, we're going to take a 10-minute recess. By my watch, it's about 7:21. We'll resume right around 7:30. Thank you.[1211.26] Thank you. Resuming the meeting. And so, is there a motion to end public testimony and enter into deliberations?
I move that we end public testimony and enter into deliberations.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chairman Filios.
Aye. When we're in deliberations, that's pretty much a discussion amongst the three of us. If we need to consult staff, any one of us can certainly do that, but typically, it's a discussion strictly amongst the three of us.
And then if we have questions for staff.
Precisely. Okay. So we're in deliberations, and so we're specifically addressing the adoption of the various budgets. So is there a motion regarding the Aquifer Protection District budget? Is there a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the Aquifer Protection District budget for FY '23.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chairman Filios.
Aye. And so, the proposed fiscal year '23 budget for the Aquifer Protection District is hereby approved. Second item, motion regarding Cootney County Emergency Medical Services, KCEMS-S budget. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the Cootney County Emergency Medical Assist Services budget.
Second. Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chairman Filios.
Aye, and the motion is carried, and so...
So technically, we'll go back up to deliberations now. We're supposed to do all our deliberations and then all our motions.
We can do one by one, but I think we're okay. And we will go into, okay, so let's go into deliberations with regard to the Cootney County budget. Any discussion? And we could have had discussion on the other two anyway, but that's okay. Cootney County budget. Go right ahead, please.
I will say, I think we all worked very, very hard on these things. Very hard and spent many, many hours. And I think we came out with a very good balance. I don't think any one commissioner got everything they wanted, and I know I didn't, but I'm willing at this point to approve this balanced budget.
Leslie, any thoughts?
Yes, so I do have a question for staff. And in the final calculations of funding the matrices, was there enough money?
Yes, so when you approved on August 1st the preliminary budget that we published, we set aside an amount of money to make sure that we could implement the new matrix into our accounting system properly and not run out of money. Me, HR, and IT all did that. We got it done. We had to use some of that money, but there is about $490,000 remaining in that pool.
Okay. So then what I would say is take that $497,000, or $490,000, add an additional $50,000 to it, meaning taking things that we're funding with tax dollars for one-time projects, fund them with fund balance, and only raise taxes 2%.
Bill?
I'm, I think we need to take the full 3%. We've, year after year after year over the last decade, people have been afraid to say 3%. And when you do that, you start building up deficit after deficit after deficit, and then all of a sudden, people are shocked. And I think 3% is an unshocking number. For what we're getting, it's well worth it.
So I would just point out that last year, the board voted for a 3% budget raise. However, due to some error, calculation error, we only ended up taking approximately 1.5% raise, and we paid all the bills, and yet the Cootney County taxpayers were not charged that extra 1.5%. So I think that's still the case here. We still have excellent revenue sharing coming in, and so I would disagree with that, and I would say that we can pay all of our bills at 2%. However, I will say, if I don't get a second to do that, I would ask that that $490,000 be put into a facilities account, so when our location, Cootney North, becomes available, we have money to move in certain departments out there and even fund a satellite office for driver's license or motor vehicle license. So if you don't want to go to 2%, then I would ask that money be set aside for movement.
Good. Okay, so while we managed last year on 1.5%, we also weren't budgeting $8 million in wage increases. And the reason we're budgeting $8 million for wage increases is because we have a substantial number of employees that have been underpaid for years, and in some cases, double-digit, grossly underpaid. We have, what is it now, approximately 130 job openings? And let me say something about taxes. This is my sixth budget cycle, and in the last five, the increases we took go as follows: 1.5%, 1.5%, 3, 0, 3. So we took an average tax increase of 1.5% per year for the last five years. The 1.5% that we didn't take left about $3.5 million that we failed to take as accounting. Now, you can say, "Well, that's in the taxpayers' pockets." Yes, it is, but this year, we're having to fund $8 million worth of pay raises, and it would have been a lot easier taking it over time. The other point is that when we, let's say, take a 2% versus a 3% increase, that's a 1% savings, you might say, to the residents. That's true. But there are 97,000 taxable parcels in the county. So if you divide 97,000 into half a mil, that's about five bucks per year per parcel. That's money that we can desperately use, and it's money that we can put to use to provide the services that are necessary. Bear in mind again, we've got approximately 130 openings, and even if there's a recession, and that number's likely to drop, it's not likely to go to zero anytime soon. So my perspective is that we go to the full 3. And I should also point out, you know, facts be told, that in the last three budgets that we went through, you voted against every one of them, and one was zero, and you voted against it. And I think I know why, but, and that's fine, that's your reasoning, but I guess that's something I certainly don't comprehend. So I'm certainly in favor of taking the 3%. I think it's appropriate. I think it's the right thing to do for the county. On the other hand, that money that you want to use for facilities from fund balance?
It's not fund balance, it's taxing.
Oh, you're...
Yeah.
What do you think?
I think that's a good idea.
You got it.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there then a motion?
Um...
Or are we ready? Anything else to add?
Yeah, I guess we're ready. So...
Do you want to take it?
I move that we approve the Cootney County budget for FY '23.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Nay, just kidding. I'm going to say yes to this one, even though there are many things in the budget that taxpayers should not be funding. However, this particular budget, I'm very happy with because the people here are doing a lot more work with less people, and we need to keep that knowledge here and keep those people here.
So you voted...
Yes, I vote aye.
Aye, okay.
Chairman Filios.
Aye.
I was going to say, "Don't you dare."
Can I think about it?
I'm going to smack you.
Okay, so the budget for Cootney County is hereby approved unanimously at the figure indicated earlier. And once again, I do want to thank Brandy Falcon for an outstanding performance. And by the way, every year, especially in the last few years that I've been part of this process, it has gotten faster and faster and more efficient and less of a headache. I remember sessions with the prior board that I served with that were absolutely gut-wrenching, running three and four hours, and it was just, never mind. Anyhow, so thank you, Brandy. Thank you to the entire auditor staff. Keith, certainly Clerk Brandon, Jennifer Locke, thank you. Outstanding job, truly. Okay. We now move on to the fourth and final, and not the most interesting topic, unfortunately and regrettably. And this has to do with the reduction of the assessor's salary. Is there a motion, please, or any discussion?
I'll make a motion. Do you want to say anything?
Well, this is a very difficult position. This board and the other elected officials involved in this do not take this lightly. This is unprecedented, and it's something that we are not, frankly, just we don't want to do. But there are circumstances that I do not want to get into in a public meeting for everybody to hear. I want to maintain as much integrity to the elected officials as possible. I do care about all nine of them, even though we, there's a few that don't see eye to eye with me, and that's okay. And this is not lightly. I would not ever do this if I did not think that it was warranted. And I say that with a heavy heart because I truly do care about the citizens of Cootney County, and I do care about all the employees, and I do care about the elected officials. So regrettably, I don't know what else to do at this point.
Let me quote something. This actually is a quote from Idaho Code, but it's actually from the city attorney of Court of Lane, who was taking the position against our collecting the interest and penalties. But the quote, by the way, is relevant to this discussion because a couple people raised the question of, you know, if I may rephrase it, where do we get off as county commissioners? And so I'll quote it. "Idaho Code 31-802. County Commissioners have the power and the duty to supervise the official conduct of all county officers and appointed boards or commissions of the county charged with assessing, collecting, safekeeping, management, or dispersment of the public monies and revenues." And I'll leave it at that. And there's been a challenge some years ago to that, but that's a whole other matter. And so this is a regrettable decision. It's not one that we take lightly. And speaking for myself, I have no desire to jump into the business of another elected official. We have, is it 14 Leslie departments that report to us, or is it 17?
We have 17 departments, 14 department heads.
Okay. Our plate is more than full, and so we have no desire to get into anybody else's business. But where that business impacts other departments, where it impacts the residents, that becomes our business because we have a responsibility. And so, may I have a motion, please?
I move that we reduce the assessor's salary to $45,000 a year.
Effective?
The next pay period.
October 1st, or I mean, the next budget year.
Okay.
October 1st starts the next budget year, so that'll be part of the motion. Is there a second?
You better.
I will second.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan. Chairman Filios.
Also, regrettably, aye. And so the decision is made to reduce the assessor's salary effective with the start of the fiscal year, October 1st, to $45,000 per year. At this time, I have 7:46. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.